I grabbed the wrong things here, let's see. What is going on here? Number two is salaries and wages, I put that one in here. Purchase of three, no. Why does this seem like it's a...
Be ready ma'am clerk.
Yes, your honor.
Very good, we'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the East Peoria City Council to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mingus.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Mayor Call.
Here.
While present voting, or while present, your honor.
Very good, thank you. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and every day that you give us. Lord, we thank you for this Easter season, a time of renewal and hope. May we as a community and we as families reflect on your love and the promise of your new life. Help us to live in peace and joy, sharing the love of Christ with one another and with all that we meet. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes please.
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 1st, 2025, and the minutes of the special meeting for a working session held on April 1st, 2025 be approved as printed.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried. Okay, under communications, I actually have two proclamations, one which is listed on the agenda. So that one I will do first. Whereas, safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state, and the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Motorcycles are our primary common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear, contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas, it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas, the members of A-Bate of Illinois, Inc., a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promotes motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past 10 years. And whereas, all motorcyclists should join A-Bate of Illinois, Inc. in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And whereas, the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations. And whereas, during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the city of East Peoria and throughout the great state of Illinois. Therefore, I John P. Call, Mayor of the city of East Peoria and the great state of Illinois, in recognition of 38 years of A-Bate Illinois, Inc. and over 352,000 registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of East Peoria. And I urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways. So we will present that at a later time. And then the second proclamation. Whereas, public safety telecommunicators, specialists in operating state-of-the-art radio and computer-aided communications, are a cornerstone of the public safety community. And whereas, every hour of every day, telecommunicators access, monitor, and disseminate information of critical importance to the safety of public officials and success of public safety goals. And whereas, these professional men and women effectively and efficiently function to help ensure the safety and protection of life, property, and individual rights of the residents of the community. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators have continued to work long hours and abnormal schedules, thus ensuring critical needs of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics to the citizens who need it most. And whereas, it is appropriate that we demonstrate our appreciation to their knowledge, training, service, and dedication. And now, therefore, I John P. Call, Mayor of the city of East Peoria, do hereby proclaim April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of East Peoria, Illinois, and urge all citizens to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city, citizens, and visitors safe. So these are the folks that answer your 911 call in your most desperate time of need, and they do a phenomenal job. And so here in Tazewell County, it's TC3 is the organization. So, you know, it's not very often that they get recognized and they're in a dark space, working behind the scenes if you will, but they're always the first ones to respond to 911 calls. So we greatly appreciate their effort and all that they do on our behalf. With that, I would go to public comment. Anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please step forward. I'm seeing no one, okay. Commissioner Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consisting of, or adopted consent agenda consisting of items numbered 1 through 5. Item number 1, adoption of resolution number 2425-143, resolution to approve the payment of scheduled bills listed on schedule number 23 in the amount of $2,587,183.92. Item number 2, adoption of ordinance number 4852 on second reading, and ordinance authorizing the selling process by sealed bid for city-owned surplus real estate located at 423 Chicago Street. Item number 3, adoption of resolution number 2425-132 on second reading, resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of pipe and accessories needed for the Newman Drive Water Main Replacement Project. Item number 4, adoption of resolution number 2425-135 on second reading, resolution authorizing the payment of an invoice from Banner Fire Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of a new fire engine in the amount of $692,670. Item number 5, adoption of resolution number 2425-133 on second reading, resolution approving the purchase of three new 2025 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for the police department from Sutton Ford, Inc., and approving the outfitting of the vehicles as listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? None, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered 1 through 5 listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted, and the items numbered 2 through 5, having been read once by its title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, I have a few items tonight, Mayor. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2425-141 here to attach, resolution approving lowest responsible bid for construction of Phase 3 of the Levy Park Development in the Civic Plaza be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2425-141 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Well, as many people should know, we've, well, we, the East Peoria Community Foundation has built, been building out Levy Park for a few years now, and they've, they're ready to embark on Phase 3, which that Phase 3 is the water pad part of the development. And so, splash pad. So one of the, this particular project, we got an OSLAD, which is open, it's the Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Agreement in the past from the state. And that was to facilitate and help the East Peoria Community Foundation in some of its funding here, and could only be used for open spaces and parks and that type of thing. So some of that money has been used. I look out the window as I speak, the ban shell that's out there, some of the money was used for it. And so they have now went out and got bids for the remaining part of the project. And those bids have come in, and the, the project, the most responsible bidder for this project being Opera Lee Construction at $538,777.75. So the key thing was the most responsible, responsive bidder there, because an ICCI had submitted a bid for $520,760.53. One part of the bid packet asked for two different requirements. One was the contractor list and, and experience putting in the type of equipment that we've, that plans to be purchased, and Opera Lee provided supporting information where the other bidder did not. So this, this project will be awarded to Opera Lee Construction.
Very good. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Where do we stand on upkeep and maintenance after, are they, are they going to raise money for upkeep and maintenance, or is it going to be on us?
No, this goes back to when they came before this council.
It's been a while.
Years ago, and the council decided at that time, they build it and we'll set aside funds to maintain it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2425-142 here to attach, resolution to approve the salaries, wages, and employee benefits for certain non-union employees of the city of East Peoria for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025 and ending on April 30th, 2026 be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2425-142 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
This, this resolution and the next one are annual things that we do. And part of that is this, this resolution for salaries and wages. If you go through the resolution here and look at it, one of the key things is the annual merit increases that we, that we, we issue are covered by this, this resolution. But also in there, you'll find updates made to the salary and wage, pay grades, and what's the mid, mid rates and max, as well as the positions that are exempt or non-exempt within the city. So this is a standard resolution that we pass each year to reflect the changes that come in with the salaries and wages.
Yeah, and I'd just like to point out a couple of things before we open up for discussion. So part of this, just to share with the council and the public, as you go through and you look at the salary resolution, there are different components with some changes that are done by resolution, whether it be every year or however frequently the council decides to make those changes. A couple worth noting in here. One, and I talked to the police chief today. I do need to make a correction under the clothing allowance for the deputy police chiefs, I believe it's deputy police chiefs, am I saying that right? And the sergeants. That, when we did the 12-hour shifts and we made some changes in this last contract, that still reflects an $1,100 clothing allowance, it's actually $1,600. And one of the things that we did do, and I apologize for not sending this out to the sergeants, but we uncovered some things both on basically every department, some things that have been in place, quite honestly, for years, well before anyone up here's time, that was done by resolution, that as people change and time goes on, not everybody can remember everything, but we decided to put stuff in here so everybody understands moving forward. And I want to bring this up because prior to the council meeting, the chief and I talked earlier today, and he asked about this. As it stood for years, police sergeants received, there's longevity for police sergeants as they get promoted to that position. In previous years, it was up to 8%. We're capping at a maximum of 5. And I'll explain that, because the way it reads, police sergeant shall receive a 1% increase every 2 years from promotion date up to a maximum of 5%. It used to read up to a maximum of 8%. The reason why we're going to cap it at 5 is based on the current salary of police sergeants. They are now on 12-hour shifts. So that in itself is an additional 5%. So if we were to keep it at 8% versus capping it at 5, nobody's hit this yet, but we're soon to have a sergeant that will. Out of respect for him, that's why it's 5 and not even less than that. But to do 8%, then that would bump a sergeant over the salary of deputy chiefs. And then here we go again, creating the never-ending compaction thing. So I wanted to point that out, I wanted that to come from me, not just to the council or the public, but I apologize that I didn't send this out in advance, so they understood it was coming, instead of just finding out as I laid it on the floor tonight. So I own that. But I'm just pointing out different things in here. This is stuff, as the commissioner pointed out, we do annually. We try to update and make sure that whatever is involved from a salary standpoint, whether it's holiday pay, insurance, clothing allowance, things of that sort. Also point out, what's called administrative days are listed in here for assistant fire chiefs. They've received these for years. 12 years, I think, but it was never part of policy or in writing. It's not something we're going to take away, but it's something that we included in writing, so we make sure that everybody has a clear understanding moving forward. Other than that, everything else is self-explanatory and base annual hours. You'll see here, to my point, the chief and the deputy police chiefs, they're still on a 20, 2,800, or 2,080 hours work period, whereas the police sergeants are 2,184 to reflect what the officers are at now with the 12-hour shift. So pointing that out for matter of record, I know it was a lot of babbling, but I felt it was important to bring that up. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4853 here to attach an ordinance amending and reissuing the city of East Peoria's Personnel Policy Manual. Be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Well, as we do the salary resolution, we follow that up with the review every year, review of the policy, employee policy manual, and make sure that it is current, and I believe the council helped and assisted in this endeavor, to make sure that changes in the state laws are incorporated in the policy manual as well. And so I'm not going to go through, I'm going to give some examples that I jotted down, but there, you can go through the packet and find the details of the changes to the policy manual. But it's common practice for us to do this every year in conjunction with the salary resolution. Some things had to do with, there's an Immigration Reform Act. Make sure we're up to, our code is up compliant in agreement there about new hires and whether we find out information that we get from a federal state agency and the rules governing what we do there. City employees, let's see what, oh, lawful measures to ensure the quality of opportunity for all of this East Peoria City residents. And so you can go through there, and there's some stuff about sergeants and personal time, as well as, oops, I just messed up my notes. The, so as I get back to where I was at, we, I mean, everything down to employees can request pay stubs twice a year for the, during the 12-month period. So again, regular stuff that we do as we go through every year, make sure it's up to date with the state and federal code, as well as any other changes that may come about that change to the policy manual.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, the vast majority of all these changes are just a reflection of, this goes to the attorney's office for review to make sure we're compliant with current state and federal law. So 99% of what's in here is just bringing us into compliance, which we do on an annual basis. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2425-136 here to attach, resolution regarding revisions and updates to the city's group health insurance plan be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2425-136 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Again, this one is an annual review type thing, where we, the city's insurance and benefits committee reviews the plan and goes through and makes recommendations and/or adjustments. And this particular required revisions this year has to do with the copayment amount of EPIPINS and removing step therapy requirements for mental health, prescription drugs, and adding coverage for hearing aids. And those changes were all, had to be updated in the group health insurance plan and are in these suggestions for tonight and recommended for approval.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2425-140 here to attach, a resolution accepting and approving the proposal from Heart Technologies, Inc. for the city IT network switch upgrade project be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2425-140 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
This is a technology-driven or technology-obsolescence-driven. What we have here is we're in need of purchasing six network switches. The total comes up to $25,916.66. And so these are Aruba various speed switches that we're going to get from...
Heart Technologies.
Yeah, Heart Technologies, so.
Yeah.
Necessary to keep our wireless stuff going and ever-changing, so technology upgrade based on obsolescence.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, that completes it for me tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, I think that might be a record for you.
Yeah, that's...
Not too bad. Commissioner Decker.
I have two items tonight, Mayor. I'm sorry, one item tonight.
I was going to say, you got two, that's a surprise to me.
Resolution number 2425-139. Whereas, Tazewell County annually provides a grant to help fund the curbside recycling program operated by the city. And whereas, the county is offered to provide the grant in the amount of $50,000 for 2025. And whereas, the grant will be dispersed under the terms of the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county under such terms and conditions as the mayor in his discretion deems appropriate, providing for the distribution of curbside recycling grant in the amount of $50,000 from the county to the city. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2425-139 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. We do this every year, Mayor. It's, our recycling program has been in effect, well, shoot, many years now. I was a kid when we first started seeing the Red Benz around town. But it certainly doesn't pay for the cost of recycling, but it is a nice, at least, offset that helps us in years where we are receiving less money for some of the recyclables. It helps offset that, so certainly appreciative.
Yeah, it's been a great partnership for a number of years, and always appreciate the county board for approving the grant for us, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Sutherland.
I have nothing tonight, your honor.
Very good, sir. Commissioner Mingus.
One item tonight, your honor. Resolution number 2425-138. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that reappointments by Mayor John P. Call of the following individuals to various boards and commissions of the city of East Peoria be hereby approved. East Peoria Planning Commission, Corby Gorman, member, term May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2028. East Peoria Fire and Police Commission, Mike Johnson, member, term May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2028. East Peoria Mass Transit District Board, Michael Hood, member, term May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2030. And that this resolution number 2425-138 be adopted as presented.
May I have a, oh, sorry.
Nope, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number 2425-138 be adopted as presented.
There you go. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. This is exactly as I read it, reappointments of three individuals to serve on boards. I know the mayor always points out that it takes a lot of people to be involved in a community, and we definitely appreciate everybody who's involved, and especially these three individuals.
Yeah, and I'd just like to point out, which I always do, these are reappointments. So these folks have served for a number of years on these various boards and commission, and can't thank them enough for their time, taking away their time or their busy lives to serve the community. So greatly appreciated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. Anyone wish to address the council on a non-agenda item? She's telling you to step on up.
The mic on?
Yes, sir, yeah.
My name is Don Gilbert. I've lived in East Peoria my whole life. I am here to inform the citizens of East Peoria that there is a recovery home in a residential area on Fonlac Drive, which we live next door to. We are wondering if there are any other recovery homes in a residential area in East Peoria other than that one.
So I'll answer your question, and I appreciate your comments and willingness to come up here tonight. So we have discovered there are two, one next to you and another one on Pekin Avenue. So we have discovered there are two, one next to you and another one on Pekin Avenue, and both of them are being addressed because the code, the way the city code is, can't have more than six folks living in.
Unrelated.
Unrelated. And my understanding is the one next to you has eight, because that's what they've disclosed, and it's posted on their website. The other one has seven, I believe there are seven currently living there. So staff's been directed to, and I know the one next to you, we recently had some activity there, so now there's a police report of a domestic between two individuals, and that's all I care to say about it, other than that was my understanding, our first interaction with them, outside of you informing us. So Ty Livingston, who's the Director of Planning Community Development, who is not here tonight, has been given this information because it is in violation of city ordinance. So we need to address that accordingly with the property owners, and that's where the process is at.
Who is the property owner?
There are two different owners, it's not the same owner at the different properties. I wasn't expecting you tonight, so I don't have that information in front of me, but we can certainly get you that.
So, Don, when you say recovery, you're talking like opiate recovery or something like that?
It could be opiate or alcohol, I don't, you know, that's, we don't have that information, but to his point, what we discovered, there are two properties, one at 156 Pekin Avenue and the other one up on Fonlac Drive next to.
Are they, are they made to disclose to a community when they do put one?
I, I can't speak to that, I have no idea, but our, here's what I will tell you is, we have always been consistent in enforcing that, so from the city's perspective, it doesn't matter who's living in the house, they're violating code, and that's the message that will be sent to them, is they need to be compliant with city code.
But if I'm hearing right, if they get down to six, then they're in compliance, and so those recovery homes.
Yes, well.
How about none?
I have, I have a problem with, first off, they, I asked a couple of weeks ago about this, and they do not have to tell the police department or anybody else to do with the city that they're doing this and they're planning to do this, nor do they have to disclose what they're doing there. And I think that everybody that's, has an alcohol problem or a drug problem, they have to have a place to live. I really don't mind that as long as the neighbors are aware of it. This specifically, next to his house, I have a problem with because it's, it's a hop and a skip. I can hit bowling school with a hard throw with a baseball.
Yeah.
I have a problem with that. That's, that's a big problem, you know? I want everybody to recover, I want everybody to be able to, but the kids are vulnerable, they don't know what's coming at them one way or another, I think. And so, that would be another leg, I think, that this house needs to be removed a few hundred more feet away, away from the school.
That I don't, I don't know how the law reads on that. I can only speak to, if they're outside of compliance of city code, they have to be within compliance, and then there's the Fair Housing Act that we have to be cautious on, which basically states that as long as they're compliant with code, that's all that's required. We cannot legally, whether we like it or not, I think there's a fine line there that we can't cross.
What's, what is the address?
It's in a, it's in a residential area.
I.
I built houses for years, and you can't, you can't build a building and start a business in a residential area because it's not zoned correctly.
Yeah.
I don't understand that, I mean, I gotta look at this.
Yeah.
And cars are in and out of there all day long, starting about 5:30, 6:30 in the morning.
Sure.
And.
Yeah.
I just, why do they even have one? I mean, I realize it's gotta put them someplace, and the hospital is involved in this.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't speak to who's behind it, I just know that we've identified two.
How come, how does they move in there and nobody pays attention to know what, the police, when they showed up, there was three squad cars there, and my wife and I, we're both retired, we're there all the time. Three squad cars, numerous police, and why, yeah.
They, they went there for a call for service and.
Well, they did, and I appreciate that, and I talked to one of the, one of the policemen, and I said, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going on here, and he said, well, we don't either. They didn't even know that that was.
Yeah, nobody was aware of it.
So, and I, I'm just being honest with you, we're looking into the legality of it, but I'm just telling you, we don't write state and federal law, so we're bound by the law, and we're going to meet the requirements under the law, and is all I can tell you is we're looking into that and trying to address it. Because I understand your concerns. Mayor, I'm sorry, just, I didn't realize this was here. Do they have, besides the, do they have seven or eight people who are patients, or is there also a practitioner there 24 hours a day?
My understanding, if I, and I looked into them, because they're all over the country, this isn't an exception here, is I don't believe there is supervision. I think it's just.
Oh.
A set amount of individuals that are going through some program that are housed together.
Well, I'll tell you a little something else. There's two people that come over to the house, and the first time they came over, they parked across the street from my house. So I saw them walk over there, a young gal with a clipboard, and then a guy. They went in the house, so I just waited there until they come out, and I went over and I asked the guy, the gal was standing back, she wasn't saying nothing. And I asked him, I said, well, what's going on over there? And really, he didn't say much at all. And I stand there, and he had a weapon and a holster. He can't legally carry that gun in the open.
Well, I suspect he legally can, otherwise he wouldn't be doing it. If I had to, I mean, sir, you understand, there's privacy rights that people have, we can't delve into their privacy rights. If they're under some type of program where they're seeking medical assistance, we're not privy to that information, and we never will be. I'm just telling you how we're looking into it, and.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, we, we take your concerns very serious. I mean, I don't want you to think we're discounting anything.
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Yes, they have only six people living there. How often is that checked? I mean, they could throw another person in there overnight.
Yeah, that's a, it's, no, I understand, it's a great question, and I don't know that I have the answer as to.
Well, I'm starting to take pictures of vehicles that are over there.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I, I just, blows my mind that.
We, we never would have been made aware of it, had you not brought it to our attention, to be honest with you.
Fonlac Drive has always been top-notch of East Peoria, always has been.
Yeah.
In fact, the people that lived in that house, he was gone when we moved there, but it was Russ Moore, he was the DM boys at East Peoria High School. I talked to him a few times.
Yeah. Well, we'll stay in touch with you, I mean, they're working on it, we'll keep you posted.
I appreciate, I appreciate them, but I just, in a residential area, put it someplace else. I understand they've got a problem, and they're getting help, which is good.
Yeah.
But put it in a, in a commercial setting or something, I mean, I, I just don't know how they can just show up and do whatever, nobody whatsoever.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your comments, and we'll stay in touch with both of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Chief.
Yeah, if you want to talk to him, you can stick around after the meeting.
Well, I wanted to thank him and Mike, that helped me put this all together.
Okay.
He got a police report on what we had.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, with that, seeing no one else, we'll go comments from the council. Commissioner Decker.
Man, this still has me perplexed, I certainly understand why they're, they're concerned. I'm curious what stage of recovery these people are in and.
Good luck, I don't know that you'll get that information.
You know, to me, that'd be probably protected by HIPAA.
You're probably right, you're probably right. I certainly understand their concern, though, because as we know, drugs are a terrible thing that affects people and controls them, so, well, Mayor, I have nothing else, thank you.
Did you say what?
I have nothing else, sorry, thank you.
Okay, well, I saw, then I saw you scratching your head, I'm like, wait, these are deep thoughts. All right, thank you.
I've only got one thing tonight.
No deep thoughts here.
Yeah, Commissioner Hill.
And you know what it is, farmer's market.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm excited, because one, a new vendor that's reached out to me, it's a frozen meat, chicken, pork, you know, a meat vendor, so something different, we haven't had for a while. So vendors, the early bird registration discount ends in May, so I would suggest you, if you're thinking about coming out with us, then get your registration in early, you can go to the city website and find your way there. There is an online application, so it makes it a lot easier this year, and it's, it's working pretty good, to submit your application online. That will be starting at the beginning of June, but the early bird vendor registration ends, I've got entertainers lining up, and so we're getting ready, so come on out, that's it.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sutherland, oh, oh, Morgan, he's got a treat for you.
He's got one crossed out.
Well, I had to borrow a pen, okay?
I knew I shouldn't have handed my pen over.
I, I got four quick comments.
I'm teasing, take your time, you're good.
They're not really complaints, maybe one is Newman Drive has started, the water main, I drove by just a little bit ago, and it looks like they are down at the bottom on Meadow and tapping into the main to start running it up the hill. Please, guys, we're gonna be in your way, don't get frustrated, taking thirty seconds extra to go up and down the hill if you gotta be someplace. I don't want to have to put people out there to direct traffic when it's like one car an hour, you know? Swimming pool opening is about here. Get your auxiliary water meter, if you want one, if you want to save money ASAP. This allows you to fill your pool, water your garden and yard without sewer charges. So if there's a hundred dollars, I'm gonna round, guys, if there's a hundred dollars in water bill, there's a hundred dollars in sewer bill. So if you want to spend two or three hundred dollars filling your pool, another two or three hundred dollars paying, paying for a sewer bill, then go right ahead and don't get a meter. Also, and I'm going to say this with all due respect, because some people close to me have called me up in the past and wondered how to handle this. Listen, you can call downtown here to City Hall and find out if you have a leak, how it's handled, how often it can be done. What I don't want is a phone call from somebody that was on vacation for two weeks and left their garden hose on and wants me to just, just, just ride off the water and the sewer and everything, that's not me. Don't ask me to do it, because the answer's no, from me, okay? The new police station is under construction, I just don't want the city council, I'm going to keep bugging them and bugging them and bugging them. I want those electric pumps to be put in to the areas which we have to rent pumps during flood season. I want electric pumps put in there that's connected to the SCADA system that turn on and off automatically, and if we have to take the pump out before, after flood season and put it back in before flood season to make the Illinois EPA happy, which is the stupidest request on God's green earth, then we'll do it. But the last thing I want to do is to, to make it to where there's any possibility that the police department will be an island out there of any kind. Last thing, I can remember when summertime's about upon us, that kids had a chance for summer work in the city of East Peoria. They were mowing, they were painting, they had police explorers, they had volunteer firemen as kids wanting to know if that's what they wanted to do to, to go on for higher education to do that. Over the period of years, because of insurance and unions and discombobulation of the families, that this has fallen to the wayside. And somehow, I would like us to get together and brainstorm with the Park District, with anybody that needs anything, to get these kids and teach them how to work, how to, how to be a member of society from the very beginning, instead of them sitting at home playing on a damn board game in the basement. I'm done.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Mingus.
I don't really have anything, your honor, I'm with Commissioner Decker, I was, I didn't, maybe I'm, shouldn't say this, but I didn't know there was such a thing as a recovery house that people, and are they, I guess I have some questions that I won't ask in the council as far as, are they operating like businesses or, is it rent paid or?
I honestly don't know, we were just, literally just made aware of this from that gentleman.
And, and could ordnance, I mean, we have ordinances on short-term rentals that are, I'm looking similar, so anyway, I have questions, and then I know you sound like you just.
Well, if I might, I've been working on this for a little while, and I don't want to say more that's going to get me in trouble than what, but the owners of the house live in the state of Washington, and they're being paid for, I think, by Carl Hospital. So if I'm correct, which I'm pretty sure I am, because I saw it in writing, that's how it is, and so somebody could actually have a good-sized house and have connections somewhere and do it. I, I disagree with that. I, I was surprised when the police chief told me that they don't have to be informed and wasn't informed. And you know me, I'm, I'm less government interference and private, anything than anybody that I can think of, and this one here, I think that we need to take it by the.
I mean, I, I tend to agree with you on most of those things, so I'm not even saying, I guess, I guess where I, where I am, we, we, as a city, want to know when people are out of town, we keep track of if their house is being occupied.
Right.
And, I mean, I guess that's my questions are, I have more questions than anything else, like.
Yeah, I think, well, we're.
What can we?
Yeah, we have a lot of questions, too, and I think at the end of the day, it's going to have to go for legal review, any changes that we do make, but I do know, as it stands today, both those properties are in violation of city code, which in the past, we've been very consistent in how we enforce that. So from a legal perspective, I'm not concerned about informing them, they have to be in compliance.
Have they responded, Mayor, to the?
That, that I can't speak to, Ty's been out the last.
And I don't mean to put you in the spot, Mayor, I know you just found out about it, so.
But, you know, I think the important thing is the, they're not out of, and I'm not supporting this anyway, because I was unaware of it as well, but the, the compliance issue is the number of people. And it would really apply, it's probably in the ordinance, not from a recovery house, but any house in the city of East Peoria, if you have six disassociated or unrelated people, you've met your max, so if what I'm hearing is, we will need to look into, and again, mostly from the legal perspective of what can you restrict in the residential area if it's, you know, Mr. Gilbert talked about, it's, you know, like it's a business. Well, you know, if it's a sleeping arrangement, you know, yeah, where is the fine line?
It's still a business, somebody's getting paid.
Someone's making money on it, I'm guessing.
Well, evidently, property owner's getting paid for leasing out his property.
Here's what I'll tell you, we're looking into it, and we'll get back to you guys. No, that's fine, you're not putting.
I have, I have nothing else.
Okay, very good. Just real quick, back in fall, knowing that Caterpillar's 100th anniversary was this year, Cat didn't really announce all the events and how they were going to celebrate it, but I, you know, I offered to do a proclamation. You know, Cat began here, in East Peoria, literally, right about where the Holiday Inn and Suites is located just west of here. and Suites is located just west of here, um, where we sit tonight. And, um, they didn't take me up on the time. They just said they're working on different things, and it, it doesn't matter. I really wanna do a proclamation, but I also wanted their approval to do that. Uh, however, that being said, I wanna give them a shout-out today because I did attend their open house at the Cat Visitor Center, and I gotta tell you, they got some really cool stuff on display. One hundred years, and they had two machines right now, in my understanding and talking to Doug McCarty today, I believe those machines, even though they're pre-sold, they should be on display there, uh, for a matter of months till sometime in the fall. But they're painted the old battleship, what they called Centennial Gray.
Mm-hmm.
So the original tractors, Caterpillar tractors, um, were gray in color, and the original trim on a Cat tractor, Cat was a wavy logo in red. Um, the ones over here on display are the Centennial Gray, the Battleship Gray, but with the black trim. So back in, um, I don't know, I think it was like thirty-one. Yeah, I got a note in front of me to make sure I highlighted this. I just found a lot of stuff fascinating today, things that you learn. My dad retired out of Cat. There's a lot of things that I knew growing up, being in a Cat family, about Caterpillar, but that is one awesome place. It's a hidden gem here. That place was packed from the hour and a half that I spent there, and I didn't get to see everything. But one of the things, they, they switched to what they call Highway Yellow, which is what I remember as a kid. It was like a, almost like a goldish color, if I can remember right. And it wasn't till seventy-nine when they went to Caterpillar Yellow, because the Highway Yellow was discontinued. But they switched to yellow with black trim. Uh, but anyway, the gray machines, they decided in, in honor of their hundredth year anniversary to build out different models in limited edition, like you would a car that's a limited edition. They only made so many of them. And the ones on display, if you were to look up, they're a cab, they have a, a number on them. So let's say one model, they, they made twenty. That's, let's say, number nine. It's, it's just cool. I just encourage people to go, uh, and look at that. And I just personally, um, wanna thank Caterpillar for choosing to do business here in greater Peoria area, and they have a huge presence here. And it's just so cool to see them celebrating a century.
Yeah.
A century, and you look at all the lasting impact, not just in Illinois or greater Peoria area, but throughout countries around the world. And it's just such a cool story, and, uh, we just join them in their celebration, one hundred years today.
Now, is that a hundred years of Cat, or is that when Holt started?
Cat.
Okay.
So Holt and Best merged a hundred years ago.
Okay.
And Caterpillar was born, right here.
April fifteenth, nineteen twenty-five.
Yep, in East Peoria. So, cool story, and, you know, I could go on and on, some of the stuff. We talked about diesel engines and, you know, Cat's still an industry leader. I mean, you look at innovation, engineering, you look at their dealer networks, and that was actually when Best and, and Holt merged, they already had their dealer networks. And you just look at Cat dealer networks, like right here, Altorfer, right in our backyard.
Yeah.
Just so many things that, and I know Commissioner Hill is employed by Cat, so I don't wanna put him on the spot and get him in trouble by saying anything he shouldn't talk about publicly, but when you look at all the companies that literally started from scratch in support of Cat, not just here, globally, and the impact that they've had. I'm just, I was pumped. I was so excited to get over there, and I just wanted to explain why there was no special proclamation. Uh, I really wanted to get their approval, and there's gonna be a year-long, uh, event. It sounds like they have plans, so stay tuned. Might be one coming yet, but I just wanna congratulate them. Hundred years going strong.
Isn't the McLuggage Bridge named after the gentleman that brought the two companies together and formed Caterpillar?
You, you told me that. I don't know. I've never.
Well, I, if not.
That might be part of my math. I have no idea.
You know, when you look at the.
I honestly don't know.
You look at the historical pictures, it's, you know, Mayor was talking about the early machines you oft, often saw in the agricultural, but they've got some old pictures of when they were building Cat Trail or one sixteen.
Yeah.
Where it's pretty, it's pretty amazing to see.
Yeah.
Look at it now and, and then look at some of these pictures when they were carving that thing out.
Yeah. I mean, I just encourage you, if you've never been to the Cat Visitor Center, just go take a walk through there. There's some really cool stuff, um, from the beginning through today, quite honestly, so. It's just neat. Got great staff over there, but, uh, that's all I had. I just wanted to give Cat a big shout-out. Hundred years going strong. So with that, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday evening, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While present voting, I, your honor?